I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, August 28, 2013, at 7:01. And can we get members present?
Hans Hansen.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Brizuela.
Here.
Joseph Otidy.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here. And today, we will ask Ms. Mukulik to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from any administrator?
So, yes, last Wednesday was the first day of school. We had, once again, a very smooth opening. Our early numbers show that we do have an increase from last year's enrollment this time. We have about over 150 students, about 165 more than last year, and majority of those students are in our kindergarten and TK classes. So, our enrollment is increasing. It was over 100 students more than last year in our TK and K classes this year. So, we're really excited about that. I just want to thank all the staff for a smooth opening. It was a really good opening.
All right. Is part of the increase because of the transitional kindergarten?
No.
No?
We increased the number of classes, but kindergarten numbers also increased too. So, we, more students.
All right, good news. Any other amendment?
I was gonna pass.
All right, pass. Comments from any board member, Mr. Hanson?
No.
Another pass, great.
I'll just wish everybody a great welcome back to school, and, you know, it's always exciting at the start of the new year, and look forward to all the great things we're going to accomplish.
Great. Ms. Brizuela.
Well, I did attend the back-to-school for the teachers, which was great. I had to run out because I had to go teach in South City, but wanted to welcome everybody back and say, "We're excited, very excited about this year. A lot of good things happening, and I think you're all excited too." So, welcome back.
Mr. Otidy.
Continuing the theme of redistricting and equal rights and equal votes, September 10th at the Daly City War Memorial will be one of the last set of meetings for people to participate regarding the redistricting issue for equal votes, equal rights here in San Mateo County. I'd like to invite everyone. I think it's 6:30 on, once again, War Memorial Building, Daly City, September 10th.
All right. And just to segue from that, I just want to make note that this is the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington. And so, in that vein, we still need, you know, more jobs, more, we need to protect people's voting rights, and also, we need to work on our gun violence laws. Persons wishing to adjust the board, we have one speaker's card, and that's from Melinda Dart.
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I'm glad that we just mentioned the March on Washington, the 50th anniversary. I think it's very important, and I know that teachers are looking at some links that have been sent out about that, and finding time to mention that in the classroom. It's important for all of us to remember, to go forward, and on behalf of the teachers of the district, I'd like to thank the board and also the community for hearing us over the last few months over our need to receive a wage increase. And I know that you haven't voted on that yet, but the teachers have voted to ratify their agreement. 299 voted yes, and four voted no. And so, I know that morale is up across the district, and I can only think that productivity, if you want to call it that, will only improve with increased morale, and that this is a wonderful beginning towards making sure that we attract the best teachers to our district and keep them here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dart, for all your hard work and also your negotiating team. And I would also like to thank our negotiating team, the administration, and the leadership of our superintendent, Mr. Vidalis. Correspondent. After we vote on it and more people come, hopefully, we'll have even larger applause.
We're working on that.
Yeah. All right. Correspondents.
Yes, I received a link this morning, and I'll pass it on to the board, but you may look at it yourself. The San Francisco Examiner just published an article highlighting the efforts of our district to produce solar energy. A very positive article, very accurate article, and I think it's great to be able to highlight our efforts here in the North County as a community that is interested in saving energy, which we are, and also as a community that wants to be green about how we produce our energy. And I always think about Mr. Hanson, hoping that, you know, we would find an oil well one day underneath one of our fields, and how great it would be to have a constant stream of revenue resulting from the oil that will be extracted. We never found that oil well, however-
Actually, we found a little one.
Yeah, the old tank.
Yeah, it was an oil tank.
But it would not produce oncoming revenue.
No, 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 no.
However, we've sort of reversed our oil well, and we're drilling from the sun.
So, in a sense, we've now are able to count on a steady revenue stream resulting from
the savings that we do not have to pay utility companies. So, thank you to the board, thank you for the community for making that happen. Yes.
You said it was in today's column?
San Francisco Examiner.
Oh, Examiner.
Yep.
Did you write the article?
I didn't write the article, but it was as if I had. I did spend quite a bit of time with the reporter who was reporting on it, and he was very, it was a great experience. Not all reporters, you can count on that kind of experience. The other thing I also wanted to comment was also on the fifth anniversary on the March on Washington. Over the last couple of days, heard a lot about it, and I've had opportunities to reflect and think about how grateful I am for partners and colleagues in the school district that every day work to bring Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream alive and a reality for all of our students and in our community, and it's a great honor to be able to work alongside individuals committed to that outcome. So, thank you, colleagues and friends and coworkers. We work together to make this happen.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Vidalis. Also, on the Examiner article, yeah, I received information about it from Supervisor Dave Pine, and we also got a congratulations from City Councilman Sal Torres as well. And so, I read the article, and it was really great, and they also mentioned the high school district and, as well, in the article. So, do you have any superintendent comments?
No, that's it. Well, those are both correspondents' comments.
And comments together. And we have an amendment to the consent agenda. Would you want to talk about that?
Yes, in classified personnel, Section 5, Number 2, employment of classified personnel, there is a new school secretary, Michelle Espinosa, and we didn't mention the school site, it's JFK.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended in the classified personnel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No resolutions on that?
No resolutions, at least not on consent.
Right. CSBA call for nominations for directors-at-large.
Yes, every year, CSBA seeks new directors-at-large. Every year, it's a different category. This year, CSBA seeking nominations for directors-at-large that are American Indian, Black, or a county candidate. So, we bring this forth to the board, not necessarily for a decision and action, although if you're ready to make one, we can do that, but more for information. If you feel, if the board feels like they'd like to make a nomination, we can work through that and bring forth a candidate at the next meeting.
What does the director-at-large do?
So, the directors-at-large meet with the CSBA Board of Directors. There are several meetings scheduled throughout the year, one of them, five meetings, one of them being at the annual education conference, and the four others at different times. The backup documents identify the dates and locations.
And then also sometimes you go to certain districts, they're required to go for something they want, need help with, so they have five competitive dates to go.
Well, I'd like to suggest that we consider nominating Mr. Ali as the county-at-large candidate.
But he can't be county.
He's not a county board of education.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, that, I didn't understand that. I thought that, I thought it said they had to be in the county. Okay, so they have to be on the county.
Yeah, county board of education.
All county boards get given that one person that's in charge of them.
Uh-huh. Well, then, as I understand, we could nominate him for either of the other positions as well. So, I'm guessing you'd like some time to think about that before we-
No, I can go for a Black, that's fine.
Okay.
So, did you read all of this?
I didn't read all of it, but-
Okay.
So, we won't take action on this necessarily today, but Mr. Ali, if you would fill out the paperwork, we can attach that to the next week's or even, I mean, the 11th or the 28th. We can decide which one you feel like you'd be ready for, since you're in the midst of moving, so, okay, all right.
Is that what you do?
Yeah, I'm kind of confused with this one now, because when I read it, it says that CSBA call for nomination for directors-at-large, and they're also seeking nominations for directors-at-large. And so-
They have several categories that their directors-at-large serve under.
Right.
Several over major ethnicities throughout California, so right now, they're seeking for the American Indian category, Black category, or county candidate, county board of education member.
Right.
Last year was Asian.
Well, so why doesn't any one of us qualify?
Because in the Black group, you have to be Black, and the American Indian-
They actually don't specify that, but one would assume that that would be what they're looking for.
Well, they didn't say Danish, so I'm out.
Well, this started many years ago, because at one time, with CSBA, all the directors were white, and I think some of the groups felt that they weren't getting represented, so they established these little groups, and this way, their special interests to get together, they're able to bring it to the larger-
Okay, I understand that, but the word "or" is what caused me to take a second look, because it's one or the other. So, I don't know why Shaquille can't run.
It would be "and." He can run as a, in the category that he fits in, and I think, you know, he indicated he would fit into either American Indian or Black, and he's electing to seek nomination for Black. So, when he fills out the nomination form, then we can vote on it.
All right.
So, why don't you go for it?
You want to just do it now, then? Do the vote now?
Well, I think that we should see the application material, do it decently and in order, as my Presbyterian ancestors would have said.
And then at the-
And the Lutherans, too.
So, we'll just, so some of the motions table, then?
Yes, okay.
I'd like to just motion that, yeah, to table it, and that if Mr. Ali is interested in the application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You got that over there? All right. Minutes format.
Yes, and so, I'm bringing forth, you know, an item that now that we are recording and posting the visual recording online with, of our meetings, that the board consider modifying the minutes format to better take advantage of the visual recording that is now available. So, in your backup, you saw two different versions of minutes. One is the approved version that we've been doing now for several years, and the other one would be a recommended version that would still comply legally with all the requirements of a board meeting, but at the same time identifies, you know, the beginnings of different conversations so that members of the public can review minutes and then review the visual recording to see the actual proceedings versus an interpretation of what those proceedings were.
So, does that mean that everything is the same except video one of three time? What does that mean?
It gave a more streamlined version of what happened or what was said, and then for, you know, so it's sort of said, "This was discussed or brought up," you know, like in the comments, and then, instead of trying to transcribe exactly what the people said, it simply directs anybody who wants to know to the video so they can get exactly what was said, instead of our best reconstruction.
So, how do they get the video through their-
Through their computer.
Yes.
Or presumably, still in the old-fashioned way, by going down and getting a disk from the district office.
You know, I don't mind if you break it down a little, as long as it's, doesn't lose its essential, what is being said, and that's what happens so much, lose the essence of what's being said.
I think we're actually cutting back so that, instead of losing the essence, we just give a quick blurb, and then if they want to know exactly what was said, they can go to the video. So, we're actually making-
Sort of.
So, we used to do the same thing with the tapes, so people would listen to the tapes to find out what was really said, and so this is the same thing.
We can do that. I mean, I'm just saying, as long as it doesn't cut out the important part of the message, because I think it looked like they cut out a lot of stuff.
Well, I think what we, the way that the minutes were being proposed is that there would continue to be a summary of action that was taken, and a summary also of the topics that were addressed. We have attempted to start including the minutes of the meeting that the conversation occurred, so that members of the public can get the actual conversation that happened versus, again, a transcription or sometimes, you know, well, it would be a transcription of those. We would still continue to identify those who made the motion, those who seconded, the results of every vote, also roll call votes would continue to be recorded on written minutes, and if voice votes are not unanimous, we would indicate the way that the votes fell out. So, the video record that we now have and that we've been using now for several months allows the public to view the actual proceedings, and we have been marking the video minutes on the actual minutes of the meeting. So, when it says "video one, minute three," or something, I forget how it's written, but it would mean, sometimes, the videos come to us as one whole video for the whole meeting, and sometimes, it needs to be broken up into three separate ones, and so, or four, and so, they're all uploaded, and they're right next to the minutes section, and they're, they are available through a link. When somebody goes and reviews the minutes, it is online, which most people do, we've never had anyone request hard copies of the minutes. When someone reviews the minutes online, they simply click on the link that says the video of this proceeding are available at this link, and it takes them straight to a location where they can view the proceedings themselves.
That's just taking good advantage of the computer age.
Yeah, and you can view those from anywhere in Daly City or on the other side of the world. So, the recommendation or the proposal is that we move to a new meeting format, new minute meetings format, and it would certainly cut back probably by half the amount of time that it takes to produce meeting minutes.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, are we ready to vote?
Yes, and I'd like to make a motion that we change over to the new format for the minutes.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay.
All right, so, pass. Business and financial procedures.
Now, we still have item number five.
Oh, sorry, all right. Appointment of member to the Measure I Citizens Oversight Committee, parent member.
Yes, at the last meeting, I indicated that the member that we originally would, thought we would nominate was unable to serve because she was an employee. So, today, I bring forth another recommendation for the board's approval, and that would be Ms. Manufu Annoi. I don't, I know, yeah, Ms. Manufu. I, she has repeated her name to me several times, and I don't quite get all of the syllables in there, but she's unable to be here tonight. She expresses her regret, she needed, she has been called out of town to deal with some other matters. She was planning on being here and very regretfully expressed her inability. But as you looked at the background information there, she has, she serves on the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women. She has served as the San Mateo County Pacific Island Initiative, also in Congresswoman Jackie Spears, Asian Pacific Islander Caucus Group. She has also helped as an organizer for the Jefferson School District Health and Literacy Fair. That's happened a couple of, certainly, she was involved two years ago, and I think at a lesser level in other years. She's very highly qualified. She's a parent of a student at MP Brown School. She's very eager to work and support our district and community in this capacity, so she's my recommendation.
She also bought all the vowels.
She, yeah. One of the other things, oh, I failed to say is that she has run, she's run a program, a summer program, Camp Unity, which this last year was able to be run in our district, and many of our students in our district were able to take part in that summer program. I believe she'll be coming at a future meeting to share the results and the success of that program.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Manufu Annoi as parent member of the Citizens, Majorized Citizens Oversight Committee.
I'd like to third that because she's also a product of Lowell High School.
Lowell High graduate.
Roll call.
Right?
It can be a voice for-
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I heard everyone. So, now we get to skip a lot. So, Board Resolution Number 13-08-28, Resolution of the Board of Education of the Jefferson Elementary School District, entering the election results into the minutes and certifying to the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County all proceedings in the November 6, 2012 general obligation bond election.
So, I'd like to just speak to this on, dated on December 4, 2012, Superintendent Vidalis received a letter from Mark Church, Chief Election Officer and Assessor for County Clerks Recorder, that certifying the results of the Measure I for the Geo Bond for $67.5 million for the district, which was voted on November 6, 2012. Just for some interest here, our registered voters were 36,559. Of them, 26,290 voted, which was 71.9%, and of course, this is a general election. Of the ones that voted, 21,138, so 80% voted on Measure I. Of those, 16,261 voted yes, 4,877 voted no. The yes were 76.93%. In order to win the election, we would have to have at least 55%, and we clearly passed that. So, part of the whole process is that the board recognizes the election results and puts them into the minutes, and then it'll be passed on to the county superintendent of schools.
All right, do we have a motion?
I motion to accept the results, just out of curiosity, since it was on November 6.
I knew you were gonna ask back.
And today was-
So, let me, let me-
28, 2013, our expeditious-
Yeah, we should, we should have indicated why we're doing it at this date. So, there's certain timelines that need to be met after the board passes this resolution accepting the results, and so, one of those timelines needing to be that we needed to appoint a Citizens Oversight Committee within a certain number of days.
60 days.
Within 60 days. So, rather than risking that we would have a hard time filling the Citizens Oversight Committee, we decided to wait until after the Citizens Oversight Committee was appointed, and then we would accept the results, so.
Like, good question.
A very good question.
Good question, good strategy.
Good move.
Yeah.
So, this is where I was thinking of a roll call.
And I hope, I hope we never forget the value of signs.
Yes.
Because the last time we did the bond issue, no signs.
Oh, wow, all right. I didn't know that.
I think I said that when we first talked about this.
All right, so, we need a roll call for this one.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Otidy?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Good work. Classified personnel retirement.
We had one of our middle school custodians retire recently, so we recommend approval of the retirement request of Daniel Contreras, who's Custodian 3 at Thomas R. Polisita, was effective July 29 of 2013, and we'd like an appropriate resolution prepared commending him for his years of service. He has worked with us since April 1999.
Wow.
14 years. Well, I'd like to move that we approve the retirement request of Daniel Contreras and that we have an appropriate resolution prepared commending him for his service, and many thanks.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board policies.
Yes, and so, finally, we get to this item. This is the third time that it's been on the agenda, and we have time, sometime. So, you've definitely had enough time to review them, so if there are any questions or comments on them that we may be able to take notes on, and then we can accept them as a first reading and come back.
I just want to know under administrative regulations, employee notification, AR 4312.9, why is it all scratched out, and is it somewhere else?
That was AR 43-
4319?
4312.9. You scratched it right in the middle of the numbers.
312. I don't see a 43-
Page numbers would be so helpful.
It would. Page numbers would be really helpful.
4312.9?
I don't see that in my packet.
I have a 4312, either, I have a 4319.21.
I have 4212.9.
Oh, 42.
4212.
And then, including- And then, and well, including that one. Yeah. Starting with that, and then the next one is Administrative Regulation, which is four-three-one-two-point-nine. My question is, all of this is scratched out. Is it somewhere else?
Generally, when it's scratched out, it means that we don't want to change what is, what we currently have.
I mean, this is in.
This is not what we have. This is a proposed.
By scratching it out, what do you mean, do we, is okay?
Oh, deleting the existing AR, correct. So that is because it exists in other, in other ARs, yes.
Okay, that's, that's why I made sure that it wasn't.
Okay, that's, oh, I know where it was.
It's somewhere else.
Is it somewhere else?
Yes, it is. So those that are being deleted, those generally that come at the end, um, yes. That one was being deleted.
I wanted to comment that I really like the way the employee notifications, the, the next pages are, the way that they're in columns is really easy to read and follow. It's excellent.
Yep.
That one was good. There's some others that I have. This one is on Professional Standards.
Number?
Policy four-one-one-nine-point-two-one-C. And it's at number twelve in the middle of the page.
Yeah, it's on page forty-one, if anybody's looking digitally.
So that would be four-one-one-nine-point-two-one-C?
Yes.
Okay.
In the middle of the page, at least my page. It says, I am number twelve. Using district equipment or, or communication devices for personal purposes while on duty, except in an emergency?
Yes, so, and, in the case of an emergency, it is allowable for employees to use district equipment or communication devices for personal purposes.
I just want to kind of, would have been better if it said, they may use it in case of emergency because it was on or during scheduled breaks. Then you scratch it all for personal purposes. It was just way too much in there. So, I would like it if it was spelled out, each, each part of it, when it's okay, when it's not okay, rather than they grouped it together. I thought it wasn't for a very good, easy reading, because obviously when it's passed, it.
Okay. I will look at rephrasing that.
Yeah, you appreciate that. An emergency could be anything like, that, that welfare or something. So, the other one that I looked at was the under Health and Welfare, four-one-five-four-C. You scratch out option one, so you want option two. And I wasn't quite sure on the nature I understood this. It's talking about the district contribution towards continuation of health coverage for early retirement-covered employees. Now, when you say early retirement, you don't mean a plan that we approved, which is that they're early retiring?
It's that they're retiring before the age of sixty-five.
That, I would appreciate if that would be there. And that they're qualified, that the fisheries shall be. You took out the same as for current employees participating in the plan, and you put in at the contribution level as specified in the collective bargaining agreement. Would that be the same thing?
Um, in most years, that would be the same thing. However, in recent years, when we've had a different agreement with our bargaining units, the contribution that the district is making towards health benefits is at a higher level for one year than is, than what is reflected in the collective bargaining agreement. And so we just wanted to be clear that whatever is in the collective bargaining agreement is what employees who retire prior to age sixty-five can expect as a continued contribution.
So that means that they would get the higher one, and then if it goes back, they won't get it?
No, they get what's in the collective bargaining agreement, what is actually in the contract and not in memorandum of understanding or side letter.
So they would get the extra?
No. They get what's in, what, what the, what the cap is, and that's, that's what we've done. So the current, the, the extra benefit only happens for current employees.
I think we've talked about this before, right?
Yes, it's been a part of every, uh, tentative agreements that we've reached the last several years. So we just wanted to reflect that in Board Policy.
Okay, so when we talk about inter-district attendance on AR five-one-one-seven-B. You scratched out, you know, uh, you, I think you scratched out because it said high school.
Correct.
Right.
However, I wanted to bring up the fact that at Polisita this year, we had two students who were advanced, able to go to high school sooner, like skipped over. And I noticed that one of the students wanted to come back and walk across the stage and feel like he was graduating with the class, even though he was already in high school. And the other one chose not to. So, would this be an opportunity to think about any students that that happens to? If they really want to come back and be a part of that?
So that, that we don't even need Board Policy for. I think that was just, this is for intra-district attendance. Students coming to our district from outside of our district. So this is not.
That's a different issue.
It's a different issue.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that be something that is done, is not in this particular one. It brought it to my attention, but we might want to make sure that.
I will, I will investigate that situation. I do remember, I do recall the graduation, so I'll investigate it and report back.
He was quite proud of being there, and I think the other students probably had it there.
Yes.
It just brought it to my attention, let's make sure we have it. It was about this, um, suspension and disciplinary action for students.
Same number?
And that was on AR five-one-four-four-one-K, and also F. So I wanted to be sure of that, that the parents were well aware about their rights if they needed to meet with the board, if they felt it important to meet with the board. And I just want to make sure that that's, as I've already kind of announced over.
Yes, the, um, when, whenever we meet with parents in a pre-expulsion setting, a pre-expulsion meeting, we do make them aware of all of their rights and their different options that they have. And we do let them know what the process is at that time. And they do have, we do express to them, they have a right to a full expulsion panel hearing. They have a right to, um, appeal the findings of that expulsion panel hearing to the board at that time. Most of our families, um, you know, when they, most of our families take responsibility for what their children have done. And so they realize that, you know, that, that the discipline that being, is imposed is, is appropriate. And they do what's called sort of a stipulated expulsion, or where they agree to the discipline that, that is being offered. So they do understand that due process and their full range of options.
It sits here about, um, our closed sessions, um, BV nine-three-two-one-eight. BV? Board bylaws?
Board bylaws, yes.
So it says the board shall discuss an open session, the ARs should be discussed in closed session. I think we do that, but it also needs to be noticed. I was looking for, where it, it says that it should be.
Each agenda shall contain a general description of each closed session item to be discussed at the meeting?
As required by law, yes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
So then, there's just saying down here that you're just going to be able to say it again?
Say it again.
Well, actually, none of this has to be changed. Some of the rest of this stuff, I would just like to, to have a discussion with the board. We, we focus on this.
If you would let either me or Mr. Ali know what those are, then we can properly agendize those for a future meeting.
Oh, wait, okay. Is it okay to just say how much of it, or tell me where it would have to be at the meeting? Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Um, actually, I had a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Um, actually, one, just one. And Board Policy forty-one-twenty-one-C, and let me see if I can find it again. Hey, look at that. Yeah. Just the AR, I need the Board Policy. There. Page fifty. Forty-one-twenty-one-C.
I only have B.
Would it be on the other side?
Other.
Next page?
This is A, this is B, and then it jumps all the way over to fifty-four.
Well, I simply wanted to note that item five is one that applies only to high schools in unified districts, so we presumably should delete that.
Yes, we should.
And that was, that was all I.
No, there was a bunch of sections there. We'll just delete, delete, delete for that reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any, so I could.
The rest of it was very straightforward. It was like, wait a minute, that's, that's not for us.
Thank you for catching it in your fourth reading of these policies, probably.
I'll bet we'll get something even this reading.
Always do.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the Board Policies, is it for the third time? No.
No. First reading.
First reading.
Okay.
Officially.
Yeah.
And there's actually some corrections, really? As if?
Is that, okay, was it?
No, there were some, there were some corrections or eliminations.
Things you wanted clarified?
Yeah. Okay. We'll reword, we'll, we'll bring it back for second reading.
So, I will second the motion to accept the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from any board member?
Welcome back, everyone. It looks like we're off to a rip-roaring start. Everybody's happy, we're happy. Things are going well for the district. It's looking good. Thank you.
Not that much has changed in the last thirty minutes, but I'll add to my welcome back. Be, be safe, walk to school, be healthy.
And we also need to have the shots for the, for the kids, right?
Uh, yes.
They should have it.
By now.
If they don't have it, they know.
Well, I should be able to check, go and visit on Pershing School, and it's looking really good, and they've got the ramp, it's not completed yet, and they can't use it yet, but it's almost there.
At, at Polisita?
At, at General Pershing.
Oh, Pershing, okay.
And, um, and their garden was doing well, except that something must have ate up the skiny, and it's all yep, so. My husband's pulling it out, and then redo it. He goes over and waters it, because it's normal there during the summer to water, you know, so, anyway.
Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, now you can hear me. Oh, good, they couldn't hear me before. Anyway, um, so he's been sort of taking care of watering the place over there and getting it done. But, um, the, so, the district office is getting your solar panels, which looks great. And I'm just excited that we're going to be doing so much for the schools now, and so, our efforts are there.
Yeah, I saw the truck roll by and go down to Westlake School, and they headed up in about twenty minutes. They're really quick.
You know, apropos of those panels, can we reassure our parents that those aren't going to get smashed when a soccer ball lands on top of them? Because I've had a number of parents express concern. Are they going to restrict our children's ability to play with balls on the playground because of these are here?
Yes, I'll make sure that, um, our principals include something to that note in their newsletters this month.
They'll throw in rocks at them, but, you know, they don't have to stop playing soccer.
And may I, may I ask a question? Our barn owl.
Oh, I was, I could ask you this.
Yes, so.
The, the, the pole is still swaying in the breeze.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look into that. It is, uh, it is nesting season for a little, in a couple of months.
Little dumplings are going to get sick.
So we're, we're hoping that, uh, that, uh, some nice barn owl couple will, will move into the condos that we've, we've arranged for them, and we should know by December if somebody's living there, so.
Oh, yes.
So, so far, there's no owls there yet, you mean?
No, they haven't started.
No, because they haven't, they haven't moved out of their parents' home yet, and, and find a mate, and then find a home.
Where, where do their parents live?
Apparently not on our property.
In trees. They, they only, they only nest in trees that are hollowed out at ten feet.
Oh.
And those are few and far between.
So we have to hollow out some trees and they'll come?
No, 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 no. We actually bought a, a, a house.
Okay.
And, and a raptor perch, so that the great horned owls won't eat them.
Oh, okay.
And that's really cool.
And they're supposed to get rid of the?
But you know what I was thinking, uh, uh, Mr. Superintendent? That we don't have to go to any, any big, uh, uh, big deal to, to, to make it sta- stable. All, all we have to do is buy a four-by-four that's eight feet tall, and strap it to the pole.
Um, I was just in, um, in wine country, and, um, and I noticed that their version of the barn owl box, and I don't know if it was for the barn owl, it was a very tall pole with a cat box on top.
A cat box?
Yes.
Maybe that's a homemade job.
Yeah. These, uh, these vineyards thought that was adequate for them. So, we will, if it works, and we are seeing a subsequent decline in the gopher activity, then, then we'll explore different options of expanding this.
And I'd like a, a quick report on that barn owl activity and gopher activity.
Well, nothing yet. I mean, they haven't, they haven't even met each other.
Tell you, it will be an exciting day when we notice that somebody's moved in. We will, we will alert everyone. Perhaps San Francisco Examiner would like to write an article.
Well, you know, we can laugh, but it's ecologically sound pest control in the same vein as our, you know, solar production of energy.
That little, though, that little family of barn owls will kill about five thousand gophers a year.
You know, I'm putting one of those boxes up in my yard.
They starve to death.
Well, it's probably.
Unless you have five thousand gophers.
There are days.
So where did you put the box at? Where's it at?
It's, uh, it's up on, um, one-on-one Lincoln.
Oh, that's, they need it. Oh, that lawn is so bad.
And they have a, they have a view of, of the whole field.
Ah. Wow.
So we'll probably end up, if it works, we'll probably end up with a couple more families of barn owls there. Because that, they, they, there's more than five thousand gophers in that field.
You want to put a sign, sign out there that says for rent, or something?
No. Well, they, they pay for their keep.
That, that was the best agenda item of the.
Non-agenda item discussion.
Best non-agenda.
That's why we can't talk about that.
It's not district business, it's, uh, gopher business.